Call our Board of County Commissioners meeting to order for today. We're thankful for all of those who are in person with us or participating electronically. As is traditional, we will begin our meeting with a prayer, reading, or thought followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd look to anyone who would be willing to lead us in those. Is there someone who'd be willing to offer the prayer, reading, or thought? Yeah?
I'll give the prayer.
Okay, and I can lead us in the pledge.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank Thee for the opportunity that we have to come and meet and assemble peaceably and be able to discuss and talk about issues here in the county. We're thankful for the great people that we represent here in this county. We pray for them. We pray for those who are suffering through illness, especially this pandemic. We pray for their speedy recover- recovery. We're thankful for this great country that we have a living and the great freedoms that are ours. We pray for those who are protecting those freedoms wherever they may be and in different circumstances. And we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. You all please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's participation there. We'll now go through the process of building our agenda. All items will be considered moved to consent, meaning they are approved, ratified, or as otherwise noted unless they are held for discussion. On our original consent agenda, we had 24 items. I did not have any to hold from consent. Commissioner Lee, did you have any on consent to hold for discussion?
Just item number one, and then also, um, item number... A question, a question on item number 18.
Okay. Commissioner Ainge, did you have anything from consent to hold?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. On our regular agenda, we had 28 original items outside of our closed meetings. I have regular agenda items numbers 1, 3, 8, and 23 to be held for discussion. Commissioner Lee, did you have any outside of those?
23.
1, 3, 8, and 23.
Yes, if it's been requested maybe on item number one, since they're not ready, if we just strike that item, and then they'll come back on when they're ready, because we've been continuing.
Right. Okay, I am fine moving that to consent for strike.
So that would, and then, uh, item number, see, eight you said?
That was primarily my, just for the fact I believe we have to set that.
Action, yes. I think we have to hold for action number 10 as well. Then... Is somebody here from the Health Department? I tried to call them earlier. Oh, yes. Okay, I tried to call you earlier, sorry. I wonder if we could hold number 19 just for some clarification there. I wasn't quite sure what that was. Those are the ones-
And then Nathan, can we actually hold number six? I don't have anything else on the regular other than what's, but can we hold number six from consent?
Yes.
For a question?
Absolutely. Okay, we will consider all of the items not held moved to consent, approved, ratified, or as otherwise noted. Are there any general comments or questions on any items moved to consent? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move through the remaining agenda items, starting with consent agenda item number one, which is Employee of the Month.
I've got that. Aislinn, would you come on up? Aislinn Tolman Hill is our Employee of the Month or Quarter, or however they're... Since joining, this is, this is what was written up on, since joining the Utah County Health Department. It's not quite the same when we don't, can't get everybody here, right? It's kind of different. But hopefully they're watching online. And I have to ask, is it Aislinn or Aslin?
Aislinn.
Aislinn?
Yep.
Aislinn, okay. Since joining the Utah County Health Department as a Public Information Officer, Aislinn has created an extensive network of channels of communication, including newspapers, television stations, and radio locally and nationally, and has an excellent rapport with all the media contacts. Aislinn is dedicated to being available to the media and assisting divisions in communicating with the public and media. She writes press releases, media points, and is a skilled, highly skilled spokesperson. Aislinn provides a unique set of talent, skills, and knowledge that are sprinkled with an incredible trial of quality improvement with every project she's involved with. Aislinn was the principal factor, and I remember this because I remember sitting through that board meeting with the Health Department and talking about it. Aislinn is the principal factor for Utah County Health Department and the Project Public Health Ready, which is PPHR certification, which is a big deal. It was, it's a big deal, more than what I can express here. That took about 18 months to go through that process, which is fantastic that you did that. Her expertise and knowledge steered the PPHR team through thousands of pages of documents and criteria with PPHR certification. Utah County Health Department now has an all-hazard response plan, a workforce that has received training and development, and actual exercise practice in real events, which was very timely.
It was.
Yes. She has designed a reader-friendly version of the Utah County Health Department's annual report that incorporates clever graphics and intuitive design. Her efforts with social media have been extensive with an average of two to three posts daily, representing all divisions within the Health Department. Aislinn's knowledge and proficiency with social media has led to increased promotion and increased views and shares of events and services provided by the Health Department. Under Aislinn's direction, videography has been incorporated into the promotion of health, Health Department services on social media. Examples may be viewed at, and it gives the website, but it also talks about West Nile virus prevention, health fare promotion, flu busters, WIC services, seatbelt, bike helmets, diabetes prevention, mosquito bikers, and many more that are on there. Aislinn is well liked by all the, all those she works with, and her talents and commitment to excellence is recognized. And then there was a bunch of individuals who put some of their thoughts for you. I'm going to let you read through them, but congratulations on being, you know, being recognized for the Employee of the Quarter. Thank you. You do have a chance to speak, and since you're a great spokesperson, I figured you probably have a few things to say before we do pictures, or I guess we're...
Not good about talking about myself, actually. Eric would probably disagree, but I was really wondering why my item was not on the agenda. I was getting a little concerned about that, so that probably explains why.
Great. Well, thank you. We've got some stuff for you, certificate, so forth.
Congratulations again, Aislinn. I appreciate all your hard work. Up next, we'll look at consent agenda item number six. Commissioner Ainge, I believe you were the one that had the question on this?
Yeah, I just had a question about the fact that we're still having the county pick up the insurance here, and I just wanted to get a perspective from whether the civil who's working on the contract, or whether it's Richard who managed the bidding on this, to see how we feel about that. I know typically we don't do that, and we require the vendor to put through an insurance.
So I'll speak in Richard's behalf. This is Glenn Tanner from Public Works. I believe that the clarification would be, this is the requirement for them to carry the insurance. The contract basically is, is they have, they were bid through FFSL, is where we got the competitive bid from, and what they're saying is they'll go ahead and honor that price, other than the additional amount they have to have for our insurance requirements. I believe ours is, and Dave, you might have to speak in, I think ours is $3 million, and I believe this state was only $2. So they wanted to be able to request that additional differential between the two costs.
Got it. Is that right? It was communicated to me that maybe, so we're just, we're actually paying them for the increase for their own insurance coverage. We are not somehow covering them.
That is correct, Commissioner Ainge. We're paying them for the additional cost for their own insurance, and it should be understood that this, that the, these projects, specifically the helicopter, is only, we only pay when we have grant fund available, both for the herbicide as well as for the cost for the helicopter to actually go out and spray. So typically, if we don't have funding from grants to pay for this, we wouldn't actually have this work occur. So all this is covered through grants, but again, they did want to make sure that it was clear that the additional cost for their insurance to meet our minimum requirements, they wanted it to be covered, so.
And apparently that's in the amount of $1,500 for the current year. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what they, they found out when they called their insured company.
So that would just be an additional cost for us?
Right. Or we could, I mean, that's the question, how do we want to do it, or we not pay the 1,500 and just accept their existing insurance?
That would be up to civil.
That would be an option, although I don't know that I would recommend that, giving the aerial herbicide, it's, I would not, I think the county would be better off to pay the $1,500 and have the additional coverage and stuff, given the risks involved.
Especially where it's grant funds covering it.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Appreciate you answering those questions. I'm fine with this item.
Okay. Any additional discussion on consent number six? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'd move that we approve consent agenda item number six.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve consent agenda item number six. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That will carry unanimously. All right, we'll now move to regular agenda item number three.
I think 18, 11 consent.
Yep, sorry, 18, you're right. Missed that one. 18, improvement, this is to look at approving and authorizing the county commission to sign on behalf of the sheriff an interlocal cooperative agreement for the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. Commissioner Lee?
Yes, on this one, as I read down through it, and I realized we've probably been doing business like this, or conducting on behalf of this interlocal agreement over the years. One thing stood out, though, in this, and that is, is that we do supply this group with, with an attorney, and I also noticed that Orem City supplies this group with a secretary, but the secretary is fully reimbursed, where the attorney, it appears, like from my reading anyway, that there is no cost back, that that's a, that's a cost to the county. And so with, and I point this out because with other agencies that we have, like Wasatch Behavioral Health, we do also have an attorney that's there, but the attorney's time is reimbursed back to the county for that work. And so I was just wondering why, why we don't charge the same, you know, to an outside entity like this.
And I don't know that there's an answer to that, other than it hasn't been done, but should it be done? That's, it could be done. It could be restructured that way. Maybe Mike has more information on that.
Yeah, I can answer that. The cases that the task force are dealing with are felony cases, so statutorily, they are the county attorney's responsibility. So that's why that liaison is assigned there, because these are cases that will be going to that office.
Okay.
So whether they were coming out of any city, they are going to be county attorney cases. That makes, that makes sense that, that, and I guess, I guess, I mean, that makes sense, since it's going to be a felony case, that it would come, it would come to the, to our office. They don't, they don't advise then, so maybe help me through the process then.
Well, on any major case, if you're going to talk advisement, if any city has a major case they're dealing with, it's very standard and typical that they'll reach out to the county attorney's office and say, hey, we've got this big case. We want to make sure we're doing it right, and the county attorney's office will advise through the process, since that will land in their lap as something that they're going to take to trial. So that's, it's a pretty common practice.
We'll probably separate that from, because in our other, other boards, you know, they give advice. They give legal advice. They give legal advice as to, there's, there's none of that that happens in the sense of legal advice to the, you know, to the task force itself, separate from, I mean, I get it, you know.
Their job is criminal prosecution. There's also a board for the task force, and I sit on it, as well as David Levitt sits on that board. So if there's, you know, advice coming, it would probably come more from that level. And then each city, they're going to still go to their, if they, they're going to go to their, their legal advice as well.
Okay.
It is a little confusing there, because while quite often, there's, in fact, quite often, there's a prosecutor that's maybe involved in operations on occasion, just to assist or to observe, but it does here specify that the county attorney's office is designated the entity to provide legal advice on civil matters related to task force operations. And so that, I think, is a little more expansive than just advice regarding the criminal, criminal side of things.
And I don't know if that's referring to the position that, that David sits on, on the executive board?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Yeah.
But it is something, I mean, it's something we might look at going forward. I don't know if you want to hold things up now or not, but I don't recall any specific occasion where we have actually been requested to provide legal advice on civil matters, but the agreement does have that in there. You're right.
Yeah.
I think anytime there's been something of civil in nature, if I can think back through time, each, so the task force is comprised of agencies from around the county. Well, if someone's going to sue the task force, what they end up doing is they sue every entity involved.
Sue every entity, anyway.
So, you know, for instance, you know, you name a city, if their employee was there as part of that task force, that city got sued as well. So they're, they're doing their own legal advice at that point. They're hiring their own attorney at that point. The county's not picking up.
We don't have an attorney that goes to the board, takes care of it, and says, do this, don't do that, outside of what David does in his function as a board member.
So is Dave acting as that person, probably for?
I assume that he would be, because I don't think we have.
He would act as that person on behalf of Utah County. He's not acting as that person on behalf of each city. They, he doesn't speak for their cities.
Or the board, so.
Or the board. Because our attorney's with Wasatch Behavioral Health, you know, he, he looks at, I mean, he looks at contracts on both sides and, and reviews it and looks in what's in the best interest for Wasatch Behavioral Health. And if that's not the case, then, yeah, I can see, I don't see a problem. That's, that's the way it reads.
Makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Seeing no additional questions, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the county commission to sign on behalf of the sheriff and the interlocal agreement as stated number 18 on our published consent agenda.
Second?
A motion in the second to approve consent agenda item number 18. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That will pass 3-0. Next up, we have regular agenda item number three now. This is to look at adopting a resolution of appointment of an alternative board member to the Utah County Boundary Commission. Rob had prepared this. I don't know if Rob or Dave wants to briefly explain this, and the question is, is do we have a name to put forward today, right? And we would need to make that part of the motion or not?
Uh, yeah, Rob might be on the line. I don't have-
There is a name.
-information there.
This is Rob, County Attorney's Office. I know that Gary Ratcliffe approached Chris Paulson and Kim Jackson. Has to be an elected official, county elected official, and I know Chris Paulson said he'd be willing to do it. So I put that on the comment as a suggestion.
Perfect.
The first, the next meeting is on the 24th of this month.
Okay.
That's why it's on the agenda today.
And, and I guess my question primarily around holding this was, do we need to name him in the motion, or is it just-
Yes, we do. Yeah, yeah. And then we'll just fill in blank that exists there in the resolution, so.
Okay.
So just, yeah, state the name, and then we'll add that in.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as stated number three, with the insertion of Chris Paulson in as the, as the name of the alternate appointment to the alternate board member of the Utah County Boundary Commission.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve regular agenda item number three with the notation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That will pass 3-0. Next up, we have regular agenda item number eight. Again, I held this just simply so we could take action, to actually set that date.
So what's the date? What, what date?
The 26th of August.
26th. I'll make a motion if we're ready.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we set a date for August 26th, um, at 3 o'clock, at 3 o'clock, at this location, for a public hearing to consider the, the item as stated in number eight on our, on our agenda.
I second that with a note that I think this is ridiculous, that we have to do this to reduce, pay temporarily, but, okay, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second, duly noted. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That will carry 3-0. All right, next up, we have regular agenda item number 10. This is to take action on, to refer to the Utah County Planning Commission, the proposal. We'd held this primarily because we have to. Are there any questions or thoughts on regular agenda item number 10? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we refer item number 10 to the Planning Commission. It's a proposal for county land use ordinance text amendment, as stated in number 10 on our agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to take action as stated on regular agenda item number 10. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That will carry 3-0. All right, up next, I've got regular agenda item number 19, just to approve and authorize the signing of an ACTC Plus license agreement with Pleasant Grove City.
I'm just not sure what this is, as I was trying to, trying to work down through it. So if you could just explain what it is.
Heather Lewis with the Utah County Health Department. This is something we haven't had to do before. The state, the Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Health, has paid for all of the licenses that we have used so far through the communities that care founding organization. They have used all of those registrations, and we have a new community coalition that needs a registration, but there are none left to get, so we have to now pay for them ourselves. So that's what this is.
All right, thank you. That's helpful.
Seeing no additional questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve and authorize the signing as stated number 19 on our agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve regular agenda item 19. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That will carry 3-0. Next up, I have regular agenda item number 23, which is to receive the recommended proposals for the RFP 2020-3 for Workday Consultant, and recommend a proposal for further negotiations or award of a contract.
Yes, this was an RFP that was done for Workday Consultant. We had 12 proposals submitted, which, and the committee had interviews and demonstrations from six of those, and they selected in rank order, number one Accenture, number two AVAP, and number three Canals.
Fantastic. Any questions for Robert on that one? Looked pretty straightforward. Fantastic. I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me. I'll make a motion that we have received the recommendation proposal for the RFP as stated number 23, and we award the contract to Accenture, which was listed number, number one for further negotiations.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to receive the recommendation as stated in regular number, regular agenda item number 23, with the notations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That will carry 3-0. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda items. We do have two work session items. First up is a presentation from the clerk auditor on the 2020 primary election and 2020 general elections. Amelia.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Hope everyone is doing well. Let's see, do we have the presentation that'll go up there? There we go. Okay. So this is just a, an overview for you guys on how elections are going thus far in 2020, and also a summary of how the June primary election went. 2020 has just been full of unique challenges for us, other than the fact that it's a presidential year, which is always the big year in any election. This, this year, we also, it was the first year we did a presidential primary, so we had to run three elections this year. And then, of course, this June primary, we had to run a primary in a pandemic and a wildfire. So I wanted to kind of let you know how things went, and also how we're trending for the general election, to help you have confidence in the work that, that we have leading up to the 2020 presidential election. On April 16th, the state legislature passed HB 3006. It was elections amendments. That prohibited in-person voting in this primary election. What that meant is that everything we had been planning on for a year and a half was thrown out. We had to basically start over from scratch on how we were going to run that election. It did allow, it prohibited traditional in-person voting, but it did allow for you to do ballot replacement. Those ballot replacement areas had to be drive-up, where people stayed in their cars, and the counties had the option of opting in. Only seven counties in the state opted in. We were one of them. The reason I thought that was so important is that I truly believe that every person who has a right to vote should have the opportunity to vote. I also understand that our processes are not perfect, and no processes are, and therefore I wanted people to have another way to get their ballot. For all we knew, the day before the election, their kids thought it was junk mail and threw it away. I wanted them to be able to vote in that case. So we started immediately by identifying drive-through locations and securing PPE. The requirements were very strict with PPE to protect our employees and the public. We put together what we called our 70-day team. We had literally 70 days- Uh, we had literally seventy days between the time we found out we were going to have to change the election and the day the election took place. If you look at the list of our team here, you'll notice this isn't a list of names of people on my staff. This is a list of organizations throughout the county that came together to make this possible. We live in an amazing place. And running an election like this would not have been possible and it would not have been nearly as successful without our community partners. We had community partners from government, from private sector, and from ecclesiastical organizations come together to help us make this happen. We also utilized a lot of the talent we have right here in the county, not just in my office. I wanted to highlight some of this because truly this could not have been possible without them. Number one would be the Utah County Sheriff's Office. Our sheriff's office was fantastic. Not only did they help us plan and prepare for this event, but the day before the election and, and the day after the election, there were significant protests right here in our area. And our sheriff's department was on site with additional security to help make sure that we could continue with this election without any safety issues for our staff. The E O C, the Emergency Operations Center, was integral. They really spearheaded this. We met with them on a minimum a weekly basis and they brought together over twenty people to help logistics happen at five locations throughout the county. The, the Utah County Health Department helped us secure P P E and they helped us as we went through our procedures and processes to ensure that all of our procedures and processes were working within proper health guidelines to keep our people safe. We also had the Public Works Department. They were fantastic in making sure that we could power our elections equipment. We had a lot of unique challenges where we had to power equipment in the middle of parking lots where there was no plug-in, where we couldn't simply run an extension cord. And they found solutions, worked with vendors, utilized equipment we had and made that happen. Our I T department mapped out all of our driving locations. That seems like something that's simple, but other counties didn't have access to that. And we were able to share our maps with counties actually from all over the country to show them how we did traffic flow through our G S department. And that has been helpful to people from all over the country. The attorney's office helped us get contracts done in a timely manner. A lot of these contracts were short notice and they expedited those, made it so that that was never a bottleneck for us. And then we had the emergency services from Provo, Santa Quinn, American Fork and Spanish Fork helped us run all of our different locations, um, also Saratoga Springs. The B Y U, BYU's departments were fantastic to work with. BYU typically doesn't allow Lavelle Edwards parking lot for any events that aren't officially sanctioned events by, by the school. And they made an exception for us on this, but not only did they make an exception to allow us to use their parking lot, they brought parking staff, security staff, and traffic flow staff. Did not charge us for that, brought them on site, used their barricades and their cones, which saved us a lot of effort, set all that up for us, took that down for us and really owned that location and helped us in a way that, that was really, uh, above and beyond, as well as the Lavelle Edwards Stadium staff to help us. The police departments from American Fork, Spanish Fork and Saratoga Springs, every one of them was on site for, and Provo Police Department were on site for traffic flow. They helped with public safety. They helped everyone feel, uh, feel safe and keep everything moving. The, the Family History Center in American Fork allowed our poll workers to utilize their facility for shelter uh, and were very kind. Westlake High School really stepped up on this. In Saratoga Springs, Westlake High School was the evacuation point for the Red Cross the day before the election. And Westlake High School went above and beyond to make sure that there was not chaos and that we were still able to house that election. They really did a fantastic job, as well as, um, the staff at the fairgrounds really stepped up and helped us. So this, when I say this was a Herculean effort and a team effort, it really was. We could not have done it without our community partners. Here's a few pictures that you can see there. Uh, the bottom right is a bunch of poll workers actually taking an oath of office. They do take an oath of office because that is an, an official function of, of my duty, of, of the clerk's duties. And you can see a couple of, of the pictures of people utilizing our drive-up locations. So moving past just this election, I want to compare this election to some of our two thousand and eighteen, um, issues. I know obviously as everybody knows, in two thousand and eighteen, we were called the epicenter of dysfunction and I really came into office wanting to upgrade and update our office, not to just minimum standards, but I really wanted to be the best office in the state and the nation for people to look to. So I want to highlight some of the things that we've done over the last eighteen months that are preparing us for twenty twenty and bringing us into the twenty-first century. I specifically asked in my budget requests for twenty twenty, I tied them to specific outcomes and performance metrics. And I want to highlight those performance metrics because those are the ones that I told you I would, I would perform on. Number one was improve election security. Number two, increase operational election efficiency and speed. And number three, improve voter convenience and experience. Um, we've been able, even with all of the challenges we've had in twenty twenty, we've been able to accomplish several of these factors and I want to outline that for you. Outcome number one, reduce the risk of fraud and error through continuous review and update of procedures. I remember when I did my budget presentation, Bill, you specifically asked me, are you reviewing these processes at the end? And I had mentioned that at the, at the end of every election, we do an, a debrief with our team and we look at our processes and we see how we can improve them. And this is showing that that works. And I appreciated the question. We were doing it. We continue to do it and it absolutely makes a difference in our operations. So you could see our, we have created standard operating procedures for all of the ballot processing tasks. There's several tasks that have to be done with each ballot and we have an S O P for every one of those. And, and we're constantly evaluating those, improving them and updating them. We've already been through two versions this year as we get better and better each election. On top of that, our signature verification on every ballot, we review that three different levels. We have our first pass through the, through the machine, a second pass for, uh, signatures that didn't quite match and that we have to have someone who's more skilled look at, and even a third pass where we go into our systems and we look at other, uh, other voters in that household to see if people simply swapped ballots. We go through this process. We also, after the election, we do a signature audit. The, the state randomly selects signatures for us. We pull those and audit those to ensure that we aren't letting ballots slip through that shouldn't get through. We also have dual controls implemented on every aspect of the ballot process. An example of that is the custody of our ballots. We make sure that every step of that custody has two election judges. Every time there's ballot pickup, whether it's from the post office or whether it's from a Dropbox, we have two people. And as they move through our ballot center, we continue to track that custody. Another example of security that we've been able to implement is if we have open ballots, so they've, they've been approved, the signature's been approved, they've been extracted, but we haven't had time to tabulate them. Any of those ballots are locked in cages when they're not in play so that we don't have ballots that could possibly just be sitting around. We make sure those are locked in cages. Also through our adjudication process, we make sure there's a minimum of two people at every one of those stations and those stations are out in the open. They even have mirror screens, I think I'll go through this on the next slide, that allows the public to watch as we adjudicate every one of those. Our next area that we looked at improving is reduce risk of fraud and cost of the election by going through our data management. We do the national change of address lists throughout the year. We're constantly updating the change of address. That's huge for our county because we have two major universities. We have a large migrant population because of that. We're constantly updating those lists. We also want to look towards non-deliverables. Anytime we send a ballot that is sent back to us from the post office, not only is that a potential fraud point, but that's just a waste of money for us to have printed and sent out a ballot just to have it come back. When I took office in January of twenty nineteen, the office that Roseanne sits in now was completely full. We had over twenty thousand returned to sender ballots and that office was just full of them and nothing was being done with them. We also implemented audits by the National Cyber Security Center to allow the public to audit every single one of our electronic ballots cast. So on election security, in the ballot center, we've made huge improvements. I know that this was kind of a, a big deal for us to get our own space as a ballot center. And you, as the commissioners, were integral in that. And I wanted you to see how much we've done with that space. With the physical locate, location of the ballots, the ballots are received, tabulated, prepared for retention, all in one room. So from the time they enter the room, they don't leave that room until they're in boxes zip-tied going to archives. We can do that all in one room now. Previously, it was done in, in six rooms on three floors across two buildings and they went across the courtyard. We don't have that issue now. With the physical security of that area, if you go down to the ballot center, it has dual access. You can't just have a key or a badge. You have to have both a key and a badge in order to get into that room. That way, if somebody loses one or the other, we haven't compromised our election. We also can audit the key access and we do audit that access after each election. We've opened up the windows to allow the, the public, voters, candidates, legal observers, media, you can see the entire process. We added additional windows and opened those up so that everybody can see what we do at all times. On top of that, we've also added security cameras that run twenty-four seven during our election periods. Anytime we have active ballots, we have security cameras in that area. The adjudication monitors, they have, we have two monitors and they, they go back to back. They mirror. And so a person on one side is adjudicating ballots and the public on the other side through the window can see everything they're doing and they can see those ballots being adjudicated in real time so that there's no question about our processes or how we're doing it. We also during the election period, don't allow blue or black ink into the ballot processing center. Our ballot instructions specifically say, fill out your ballot using blue or black ink. And then we don't allow blue or black ink in our ballot center. And we change the color of pen we allow in the ballot center every election so that if we're marking things, we can see that it's an odd color. If we were to, to go and look at a ballot and we see that the entire ballot is filled out in blue or black ink and then all of a sudden there's some green ink on there and we're using green pens, then we know that something could be awry. We haven't had that happen, but we implement that just in case. We also now require visitor badges and for public tours and for processing of the ba- of the ballot center. So our key accomplishments, and I'm tying these back again to the performance metrics that I, that I asked for in our budget. Election efficiency, reduce wait times at peak to less than forty-five minutes down from upwards of six hours. The longest wait that we've had in an election in twenty twenty has been twenty minutes with average wait times under five minutes. With, with all things considered, moving into twenty twenty presidential general election, I feel confident that we will be able to meet that less than forty-five minute goal. Election efficiency, release results immediately as polls close with all the votes in possession in our office. In two thousand and eighteen, uh, Utah County only had half of their ballots counted when the polls closed on election night. In this presidential election, we had almost eighty-five percent of our ballots counted and released right at a polls closing. Um, the primary election, it was two hours later because that's what the state law required of us under S B, I mean, H B three thousand and six, but right as we could release results, we had the majority released. Uh, by the end of the night, because we stayed late and, and pros- and did a second release, we had done over ninety percent of our ballots. We had less outstanding ballots than counties one tenth our size. So we've gotten really good at, um, at processing our ballots. Election efficiency, minimize time to process each ballot. Each ballot, if we can reduce that time, we can reduce the amount of labor we need to do that. Our Agilis can process eighteen thousand ballots an hour. Our new scanners, the, the D S eight fifties can, can tabulate three hundred ballots per minute. In two thousand and eighteen, the scanners we had from Dominion were only able to process one hundred per minute. So we're three times what we were before. Increase voter outreach and voter education. We updated the website to utahcounty.vote. That goes directly to our elections website, making it so that public don't have to try to navigate through the elections web, through the county website to get to the elections website. They now have a direct link, utahcounty.vote. We increased vote by mail adoption and our Dropbox utilization. That's a huge savings in postage. It also decreases logistics, increases security and it streamlines the process. We've put these ballot drop boxes all over the county and people are using them. On election day in June, we had twenty-nine thousand people utilize our drop boxes. Between the night before when we'd emptied them and, and then the, the, the close of polls, twenty-nine thousand people used our drop boxes. That's twenty-nine thousand people who we know the chain of custody of their ballot and we didn't have to pay postage on. So that's fantastic. In-person voting has drastically been reduced. In two thousand and eighteen, about ten percent of the votes were cast in person. In the primary election in twenty twenty in June, one point eight four percent of votes were cast in person. It costs us a lot more to have people show up at a polling location and cast their vote. So that reduction is, if that trends forward, will be a huge cost savings for us. Which means that as our population grows, we're not going to have to get a higher percentage of machines. I mean, this really cascades. If we look ten years down the road, we can utilize our current capacity for more citizens if this trend continues. The rate of return mail, undeliverable, undeliverable mail, remember this, I told you Roseanne's office was full of undeliverable mail? It's a huge, it's a huge cost for us to send that out. It also is a huge opening for voter fraud. This has been a huge priority for us as a staff. It's been one of the biggest things that we've done. In two thousand and eighteen, it was just over ten percent. The national average is four to five percent. In this primary election, our return to sender percentage was two point six seven percent. I believe in my performance metrics that I, that I asked for budget for, I think I asked for us to have the budget so that we could reduce this to four to five percent and we've already beat that.
Hey Amelia?
Yeah?
Do you have any, um, firm numbers on? Well, and, and I, this is a little out of turn. I have a comment I want to make about the whole presentation, but I'll hold on that. But just, do you have real numbers on what this would have looked like? Like how much would, would we have spent on postage if it had been?
Like if those twenty-nine thousand had used, was it twenty-two cents? I think it's twenty-two cents per ballot is what this post office is currently charging. Do you know the number of ballots, Josh?
I mean, the, the rough estimate's about a dollar a ballot because you have the print cost, the outgoing mail cost and the return mail cost on a, on a bad ballot.
So I guess it, it asks, are you asking about the return to sender? Cause that's about a dollar per ballot. Or if you're asking for the drop boxes, that's twenty-two cents per ballot that we saved. So there may be a little bit of a difference there. If we had had a ten percent return rate with our ballots this year, I think we sent out a hundred and seventy thousand ballots. Seventeen thousand, that would have been seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, instead, it was less than three percent. So.
Got it. No, that's, that's what I was asking for. Okay. So, and then, and that's just for the primary? And if we have done these updates, we get the benefit of that, not only this general election, but then in future years as well.
Yeah. So we saved roughly twelve thousand dollars just by updating our lists in one election. And then the presidential primary, it probably would have been, I would say comparable. So maybe twenty-five thousand dollars we've saved year to date in not sending those ballots. And then in the presidential election, we'll have roughly three hundred thousand active registered voters. At ten percent, that would have been an additional thirty thousand dollars. So, um, my guess is, and about twenty thousand, so we probably would have saved about seventy thousand dollars, just running it off the top of my head. Just cleaning up our voter lists has saved the county seventy thousand dollars this year. That's my estimate. If you include the drop boxes that we purchased and the volume that we get returning, we have more people use our drop boxes than we do have the mail back. So even if we just used fifty percent, we had a hundred thousand people re- return their ballots to us this election. We saved twenty-two cents for each one that used a Dropbox. We had fifty thousand use a Dropbox, which actually was significantly. We had fifty thousand use a Dropbox, which actually was significantly higher than that. But if we just say those numbers, um our our savings are in the tens of thousands of dollars. And every one of those adds up.
That's great.
To surmise, Utah County is no longer the epicenter of dysfunction.
Well done.
Question, uh a question for you.
Yeah.
Um just, it's a curious question and that is curiosity question, let's put it that way. And that is, there was, there was over twenty thousand, I can't remember the exact numbers um that that ballots weren't sent out because they weren't active, they weren't active voters. Um of those twenty-something thousand, do you have a count of how many of them actually showed up and voted in person? Do you have any any numbers like that?
Well, we only had about thirteen hundred, well, how many do we have total? Thirteen hundred was one side. It was about thirty-six hundred vote. I think we had, we had less than four thousand people show up and vote in person. Um and a lot of those are people whose address changed and did get a ballot, um or they were unaffiliated and decided to affiliate. So if you're looking at at four thousand, if we say, let's give them the benefit of the doubt and say seventy-five percent of that was that, that would have been three thousand, that would have been less than one-seventh of those twenty thousand. And that's shooting high.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm always, I'm always curious at at numbers like that, you know, giving everyone an opportu- opportunity to vote. Do do those, I mean, I would think that, and now I realize we ran a Republican primary and this not necessarily a Democrat, Democrat side or any other party. But do those numbers go back? Uh because I would think that the parties would be very interested in if they, if there's large groups of of their party affiliation who um are just inactive, don't have a ballot. Do they, are are they helpful at all in cleaning that up? Uh maybe I'm asking a question I kinda know the answer to, but I'm just wondering if, you know, if they have that kind of interest in going in there and saying, there's twenty-five or twenty, whatever it is, I can't remember, twenty, oh, I know it's over twenty thousand people that, you know, that are a part of, were a part of a party but didn't get a ballot if they're, if they're interested in cleaning some of that up.
Uh I think it depends on who the party chair is at that time. Really, I mean, if there's, if there's someone who's a chair of the party who's interested in cleaning it up, then they do. If they're not interested, then they don't. So it it's not a consistent thing.
Yeah.
Where they do have interest, we work with them. Anything we can do to help keep our voter rolls more current, we do. And those voters are exactly the reason why I felt it was important, even though it was a logistical nightmare and it was a huge Herculean feat. This is why I thought it was important that we have these places, these ballot replacement stations available on election day. Twenty-two counties chose not to and the citizens in those counties, if they didn't get one in the mail or they lost it, they didn't get to vote.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I mean, at least there's an opportunity for that to happen.
Absolutely. There's an opportunity and um and as soon as they become an active voter, uh if they have signed a petition or voted, they bec- then we send them a ballot.
Also, um previous to this year and some of these changes, um one of the requirements under state law is that you send a notice to a voter at the time they're about to become inactive. And the county historically um wasn't sending those notices out to to those voters to let them know they're gonna become inactive because that gives the voter an opportunity to then respond to that mailing to prevent them from becoming inactive. Um that's something that's really important as you transition to vote by mail. So as the county is now fully transitioning to vote by mail, we're now doing that um more, you know, more thoroughly in each election. That helped to continue to keep the rolls fresh and accurate. And it also gives those inactive voters a notice that they may be coming inactive soon.
And if any one of them showed up at the polls, we still have their voter registration on file and if they had moved, we had the opportunity to update their address.
Thank you.
Am- Amelia and Josh, I I just wanna thank you and your team, not just for the presentation, that's just the culmination of the efforts, but for what you've done to turn this department around from being the epicenter of dysfunction in such a short period is remarkable. And I know it goes all the way down to every person on your team, not just the the two I mentioned. Um and I think that's absolutely critical, especially at this time. You know, there are people who are asking questions about can vote by mail be done? And you just did with just over one percent of voting in person, having a safe, secure election with a high degree of turnout. And so I just applaud you. I'm grateful for your leadership in this area, that it really is being recognized nationally. And I think it makes all of our citizens feel good knowing that their vote counts and it's safe and secure.
Thank you.
Um, secondly, this type of presentation, I hope all of our departments are looking at this, is exactly what we need. Your department, you said there were problems that you're going to address and you asked for some additional funding from your historical budget this year. And we gave that to you. And you didn't just go and say, oh yeah, things are better. You returned, you reported with this type of accountability, showing us how you have turned things around. Um how you've saved money in some instances, in other instances, how you've just spent more money, but you've accomplished the goals that you said you're going to accomplish. I hope we see presentations like this from every department as we go through the budget cycle this year. And I just wanna thank you for your example and and setting this up.
Yeah, thank you. We'll definitely have updates when it comes to budget cycle. We'll hopefully have the the presidential statistics and we'll also go through in all of our areas. I agree. I think looking at your performance metrics and measuring to them, um in the corporate world, they have a saying and that's what gets measur- what gets measured is what matters. And um we we look at these measurements and we focus on these things and we're making a difference because of it. So thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion on the Utah Capitol Improvement Program. Rudy.
I'll see Rudy. I was just looking for him.
Sorry, I received a note that that needs to be continued to our next meeting.
We'll continue that one on. Uh we will now go ahead and look at setting our public, or excuse me, our closed, our closed meetings. I have a note that we need sale and litigation.
And if we could also do um um professional confidence as well.
Okay.
So I'll I'll set it, I'll start him. Uh um I'll make a motion that we strike number thirty on our regular agenda.
Second.
A motion in the second, strike regular agenda item number thirty. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'll carry three zero.
Make a motion that we improve instead of date, time, and locations for items number twenty-nine, number thirty-one, and number thirty-two on our regular agenda.
Second.
I'm a motion in the second, set the meetings as outlined in regular agendas, items numbers twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'll carry three zero. Bring us to the end of our regular agenda items. We would take any general public comment at this time. Seeing none, we will thank everyone for their participation and move into our closed meetings.